We do have a forum president and...
Mayor Council, tonight we have two topics on the agenda. One is an overview with DCTA. So I've been talking with Jim several months about coming in and giving the city council an update on various issues related to DCTA. So he's got about 30 minutes. It won't be just Jim.
Charles is here too.
Charles is here also. I'm sorry, Charles. It'll be both. And then they have about 30 minutes and then we'll switch gears and you have an overview of the neighborhood's program. Sorry, Charles.
Mayor Council and staff, we appreciate a few minutes to update you on DCTA. Jim's got a presentation. He'll show you a few slides in a few minutes. For most of you, I think I know this, but I've been chairman of board. My whole lack of this organization and I have a side story about that that I want to tell publicly. It's been a fun... In fact, I started this in 2001, if you can imagine that. And that was before most of you got out of college. So it's been an interesting exercise and it's something that we needed to do to get Lewisville on the transportation map in this region. I served on the Dallas Region Mobility Coalition with the mayor as well as the Regional Transportation Council. And I think it's an environment in this region that's growing so fast that it takes a lot of time. I think our agendas are now 400 pages long, if you will. And so it's been an interesting exercise, but Lewisville, I think, this is not self-certified. It puts well represented and it's something that I look forward to in the future. Jim Hines is going to give you an update of where we are. We've done some slides and we really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Mayor, members of council. I want to start off with kind of set the tone. Something, video that we've brought. I'll tell you who did it in a minute. Here we go. All right.
DCTA gives me freedom to ride around without having to have a car. Go to my internship, visit family, visit my friends, Lulu in Dallas, Fort Worth. I really appreciate the community that DCTA has put out of their way to use me.
I am, I am DCTA.
That was done by one of our college interns. I want to make sure. So really an awesome... I'm going to get this to go away. Start the presentation. So I want to set the tone a little bit with that. And as we go through, again, thank you for the opportunity to come see y'all tonight. And it's certainly our privilege to serve your community. A couple of things to talk about. So DCTA background, some of our successes, some of our challenges, right? Things that we have to work on and we want to work with y'all on making that happen. Our board came up, held a strategic planning retreat in February and published some guidance on that to the staff. You've got a copy of it in front of you. It's this document right here. And so a couple of things you'll see are pretty small on the screen, but there are big versions in here. And then we've also got some proposed service changes we'll talk about at big picture wise. There's a public meeting being held as we speak up front. So if you have some more detail and if you have a few minutes before the meeting, please come take a look and then talk about how we plan for the future. So just a little background. As Charles talked about, DCTA established in 2003. We've got 22 bus routes, the A train, paratransit services, demand responsive services. We're beginning to... These are things we've always done, beginning to get into the transportation network company world with a topic that we have... We've had a contract with Lube, we now have one with Lyft. And so it's something that we're working through to see how we can leverage that, particularly in our lower density areas. So it's real positive. We do have hazard sales tax. You know, that's Denton, Holliville and Louisville. There are 14 members on the board. I'm going to flip the page to that. And it's also on the second page of your, the guidance report. And it's an interesting... The board is arranged. We have members from all over the county. The three, meet the three members that represent the contributing member cities, Denton, Holliville and Louisville, have some special voting privileges in terms of, you know, the board doesn't make any big, really big decisions, the budget. Any, and there's a whole list of things to protect the member cities, requires a two-thirds vote to the member cities. So, and the other part is that since so much of the funding from the A train came from the whole county, as it was established, it made a lot of sense to have this set up this way. We're very fortunate to have two former mayors, former city manager for one of the communities, Mr. Miller, who's from Flowermount, is also with Hillwood. And so we've got some really smart people. Skip Cab retired from BNSF. So we've got some really good folks and really solid board members that bring a lot to the table. Organized with committees, executive committee, which is made up of the three member cities plus two other representatives. Program services and finance, every other board member is assigned to one of those. And then we have ad hoc, certainly legislative and new member committee meet as needed. One of the things that we never want... We talk a lot about buses and trains, but where we could, where we want to make absolutely sure we take care of business every day. And it's the foundation for all that we do is our finances. And so if you look at our website, we have complete transparency. You can look at our check register that's online as well as our budget, our PAFR, all this information that you may need or request, it's available online. Certainly if y'all have questions, we'll be happy to answer any of them, but it's all available there for the public to look at. In terms of our reserves and the FY18, we keep 90 days operating reserves in the bank every year, all the time, so that we can make sure we can weather any storms that come our way. And we also have reserves for sales tax, fuel, and we'll talk about the role fuel plays in that because that's a big variable for us. And then capital reserve. So if you have a $350 million railroad, you need to have a little bit of money set aside to take care of things that break and there are big heavy parts that break. So we have to take care of that as we go through. So we've got in terms of debt, good coverage ratio, clean audits, and we're recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association. Our budget for the past 11 years has been recognized as well as in the National Procurement Institute, last year recognized with the Board of Excheques. So we're taking care of business with the money that y'all entrust us with. It's very important to me and to our organization and to the board that we do that. Sources and uses of funds, probably the most significant here is that sales... I've got to be careful not to touch these things. If you trouble one, do that. Sales tax is the biggest part of our revenue stream. We're, we do receive some formula funds from the feds and some, a little bit of state operating grants that's only been from, that's really just been for the trail. Fairbox is a fairly small piece of that. And we do have significant contract revenues, particularly with the University of North Texas providing their service. It's over $3 million a year. That's a partnership with the university. Use of funds, in broad stroke, it is about 20% for GNA and lease of the building and all that, and 40% for rail and 40% for bus. A little more detail on that, how it breaks down. Sorry, that's one thing that came over there. And if you look at how we have this set up, rail ops, the biggest portion of that is purchase transportation services. We have a contract with First Transit Rail. So we do not have all of our rail service, in fact, our bus is also contracted as well. It's a turnkey contract, so we pay them for hours and miles of the train and to have us standing up and to have the rail system set up. Fuel is 9% of that budget and we have what we call other. And so other includes rail insurance, which is a little over 80 a year, facilities maintenance and supplies. On the bus side, again, salaries and benefits while we're contracted with them, and again, I apologize for that getting a little... We have about 170 employees that are on the contract side dedicated to bus. And again, fuel, 12%. We use about 400,000 gallons of gas, of diesel, on-road diesel for bus and about 400,000 off-road diesel for trains. And then the other part about that is our management contract and uniforms and we have different elements of that for insurance. And then on the GNA, that's where we pay our, not only the salaries, but we also pay the building lease, our legislative support, legal audit, all those things. So that breaks down how we do those things. Now note here, they did, we did not include depreciation. This is the cash that flows out. And there are certainly employees at DCTA dedicated to bus and rail, but for this, we put all of the DCTA employees are shown here in GNA. About 65 rail, 170 bus, 31 full-time and five part-time at DCTA. So successes, our on-time performance in 2017, FY 2017, 94% on bus, 98% on rail, meeting those standards. Again, I'll go back to the finances, clean audits. It's the most boring conversation you ever have with our auditors. I love it. It's the way it needs to be. Positive train control has been a big issue for us. We're 100% installed and we're testing now. So our goal is to be in revenue service demonstration by the end of December of this year. Actually, the goal is to be into that in October, but we have a little bit of slack on that in terms of our timing and that's working out well. Integrating Lyft into our operations, we're doing that in Holliville now and it actually ties in the north end of Louisville and seeing how we can look at that in the future for either paratransit or in our contract with UNT, we're going to show the 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM trips are going to be covered by Lyft. And so interesting, you know, one of the things, and I'm just saying this about these transportation network companies, is that there's a lot of noise, a lot of to hear that it impacts transit negatively because we go to New York City late at night and on the weekends, it's significantly degrading the number of folks riding the buses. So there's two approaches. You can either try to fight it or you can embrace it. And we've chosen to embrace it. And we think that this process, and you'll see some of the transit changes that we're talking for Louisville, actually incorporate this as well. Certainly with grant awards, ridership at UNT is high. We have some challenges ridership. We'll talk about that in a minute. 35W bus service, you have this business, oh well, business case for transit. That's what you have this summary sheet right here. And there is some big success, particularly in Louisville, what we're seeing around the Hebron Station and a lot of things to come around the Old Town Station. I think y'all also are seeing some things near the Holliville Louisville Lake Station. And this is where transitory development, all those units that are coming in, looking at, and I think this is a telling piece that comes in, is that the amount of private development that's on the ground is almost equaling the amount that we spend on the train. So it's a positive piece there and that's before we get to talking about buses. So, and that's part of the Antero group study we did. Challenges. Okay, our biggest challenge right now, now that we've got PTC rolling, is really to get, is to address ridership, particularly on the train. It's a national trend. We've been, we've been a little bit slow in hitting that hurdle. You saw the ridership chart previously. Overall, we're flat at about 2.9 million. The rail has been some, we've seen some challenges, particularly with the completion of 35E construction. And we're seeing that folks have, we're fighting, we're, our competition is convenience and until the traffic builds back up again on 35E, we're going to, we have, now that's not to say we've, we're waiting for that to happen because we're going to take some other steps and I'll talk about those in a minute. But low gas prices have been sustained. We do need to respond to this environment. This is something that, again, we can't wait for things to get better and hope it'll get better and we're taking some steps to make that happen. And then certainly Charles and his fellow board members gave us a lot of guidance on that. This chart just shows the gas prices. All right, now it won't work. All right, this is the document that I put up here that I gave you. It gives clear support, clear priority to the member cities. We've got a lot going on. We're doing some things in Collin County under contract, but those pay their own way. And, but we want to make sure that we do look at additional growth in areas that are unserved in Denton County. We think there's a great opportunity in Corinth and we've actually seen some support from the city of Corinth to make that happen. And the link to NCTC starts becoming more and more important when we look at a campus in Denton and one potentially in Louisville that we're working closely with the city staff to see if we can make that happen. They want us to continue to bring, really continuous focus on ridership, bringing value. And this was adopted by resolution in March. So, there we go. And so when we start looking at how do we improve things, we broke down our markets and we look at the disabled and elderly, being able to, we provide service well beyond the ADA requirements, which is within three, only pickup people within three quarters of a mile of any fixed route bus. And so we actually pick up people all over your community, our community, in the member cities that are served. So in Holliville, it's Denton and Louisville, we provide that service, we store-to-door service. And it helps those that are aging in place, need some independent mobility and it's a real positive thing. And if the city expands, that's an area that would be the first service that would be added, is to expand that service to the new portions of, any new portions of Louisville that are annexed. The transit dependent population, we have good access to all of our facilities, whether CCA, the Salvation Army, you know, Walmart becomes important when you need to get to your grocery store and how do you make that happen? Choice riders are our biggest challenge. And then growth areas, our university students, we're stack faculty and staff, we're seeing can sustain ridership in that area. And then one of the other things that I like to talk about is that we want to bring more than transit services to our member communities. And if you look at the trail that's going to be connected from downtown Denton all the way to Hebron, that 20-mile trail that comes into that, what we're seeing with development around stations, that clearly some of those things are partnerships with the city. We want to keep doing those things. So it's really important. So we want to be more than just providing the transit services, we want to be helping in different areas because the reality is a lot of the people who pay for what we do do not ride the service. And so we want to make sure we're bringing value to them as well. And so that's a big piece for us. Now, specific strategies in terms of what we've done to address the getting more people on and then how do we do that in a more efficient manner? So when you look at ridership, we're going to talk about fares a little bit, but how can we address, how do we make it more cost-effective to ride? How do we address service gaps? If we get more development around stations, not only does that increase assessed value, it also increases riders. NCTC, again, that linkage that has between Denton and Louisville and potentially Corinth are very, very important. And then how do we tackle first mile, last mile? We've already talked about TNCs. And how do we get job access going? Some of the new changes that we're talking about in Louisville in our service, expand the routes to touch Mary Kay. So that's a big deal for y'all, it's a big deal for us. So we want to make sure we're addressing your business needs, your citizens' needs and how we can bring value to that. And then looking long-term, and not terribly long-term, but how can we partner with, where do people need to go from Louisville to get jobs? Where do they want to, where do they want to go? Well, one of the challenges we're seeing is it's outside of our service area. Frisco, DNT and the SRT area are extremely important for me having a lot of demand for jobs and not having a lot of people. How can we partner with our, with those folks, maybe McKennie, to be able to bring folks into that area and provide access to jobs for your community? It's a big deal. And certainly in the unserved areas. Now, we've done a lot to lower our costs too. If you notice, we're running single car trains. We'll add more back if we need them for capacity, but right now we're saving wearing-terne vehicles and about a half a million dollars a year. We've also started moving our buses, the buses that serve Louisville. We're trying to get as many as we can into Louisville so that we're, neither the drivers nor DCTA have the deadhead time. A lot of our drivers live in Louisville and why should they drive to Denton to pick up a bus, come down to Louisville and then drive back and have to commute back? And we got, DCTA received a grant from the feds for bus-to-bus facilities to actually add a minor maintenance facility at the rail yard and improve our parking lot. So we'll be able to make that very effective and so we can bring that service, less wear-in-terne vehicles, less cost, more efficiency, and it's really a good thing. Trying to get smaller buses, particularly we run a lot of big buses and routes in Denton that may not require those big buses. And so less wear-in-terne streets and particularly routes 1 through 4, we'll look at lowering those down, bright size in the bus fleet. Scheduling, paratransit, we're also looking at a benchmarking study. We got a draft of that to see if we can make it up here for board meeting. And then when we went, we were partnering with DART on two things. One was for positive train control. We, and the other was for rail operations. We had been partnering with DART for rail operations. We believe, well, we know because we know what the bids were, that when we walked, we did not go with DART on that. It saved us almost a million and a half dollars a year in operating cost alone in the rail side. And the PTC was going to be in order, we think, 15 to 20 million dollars higher than we're paying for the system we went with. So we were able to save quite a bit of money. And we talked about this embracing the change and one of the things that, whether it's here in the region, opportunities that we have to be, we're recognized as staff and the board as leaders on TNC, in the TNC world. We laid an effort on the PTC technology around the country and so really that's something that we're proud of. And then ultimately, our goal, particularly on the bigger buses, is to move, not to have, go from diesel to compressed natural gas to electric, is go from diesel to electric if we can, as we, as the technology develops. California is mandating that all the big buses be electric and so that's going to change the market quite a bit. So, all right, just a quick overview of service changes, a lot more detail outside. And you know, as many of y'all know, that here in Louisville, we're the proud owners of a landfill and here at Rail Yard. We have gone through and taken this area also, done two efforts. One is we had some barrels and tires out there that we have removed. That project's 100% complete. We have a grant from the EPA to do boring and testing in the area so that we can define exactly the extent of what that is, what remediation might need to happen. So we don't, we think it's all construction material. We're going to confirm that. We want to be good neighbors and make sure we take care of business and also so that we can utilize our property. And what other uses, you know, having a blank piece of land here in Louisville doesn't do your assessed value a lot of good, so we want to try to make that better. And we're about to get proposals back on that. Rail trail, we got one piece that is not under construction. It's all funded, it's all designed. We're waiting on Tech Dot a little bit with that. And that's the piece here in Louisville that goes from Mill Street to the Holliville Louisville Station. So that is sitting in Tech Dot with fully funded, fully ready to go, just waiting for a letting. And then we're changing up our routes. We did some changes last year, found that we thought this would make a lot of sense and it's not, the riders have not responded as well. And so instead of having two rather long routes, I'm going to look at some shorter routes that serve the same area, actually that expand the area that is served. And a good comparison of what we're doing now and what we propose, go to four routes, one zone where we incorporate some Lyft or our vehicles that are demand responsive, go to 30-minute frequency all day instead of 30 and 60. More employees within three quarters of a mile and more population. So hopefully be more effective and we'll continue to respond and make changes as we need to improve your service.
So Jim, when will that go into place?
August.
August?
Yes. That's being, we're out for public comment right now and so literally out there for public comment. And so we'll get feedback on that. And then this is an area that we're trying, is a possible lift zone to address the Waters Ridge area. And how can we get, putting a lot of buses out there is very difficult. How can we have some hub locations for people to get picked up by, say Lyft or one of our vehicles, more demand responsive? And so that's something we're trying, see if we can get all the pieces put together on that, tie everybody up to the station. We're, this one is going to be dependent on us getting some technology pieces in place. So this may be at January, but we're trying to make this happen sooner rather than later. And here we go. Fares. Couple of things we see as a barrier to fares, is a barrier to ridership is fares. Now, I'm going to throw my friends at DART and the T under the bus because they're proposing and changing the regional fares quite a bit, going from $10 to $12. So we see value in having our customers being able to buy a regional pass and use it anywhere. And then the other part of that though is what happens if you're in a time of decreased ridership if you're increasing the price of your product? That's counterintuitive. And so what we're looking at doing is look at our local fares on a promotion basis or essentially a permanent basis to where you can partner up a local train fare at DCTA, a local train fare at DART and make it actually cheaper. So we're trying to make those things happen so that we can still have the convenience of the regional fare, but have an option for those folks that need the less expensive option to do that. So we're also looking at some potential on the bus. And so we're meeting tomorrow with the program services committee to talk a lot of ridership issues. So that's something we got there. And about to wrap up. Long-term, Charles talks often about where we're going. If you look at the growth in the county, one of the highest growth counties in the, not only in the state, but in the nation, will the highway improvements keep up? Well, that time will tell, but I think if this happens, we're going to continue to have a big press for what we do for a living and it'll continue to grow. And then, oh, backed off, sorry. So we're looking to improve ridership, jobs, make sure we embrace change, TNCs, we've got taxis in some areas. Preparation for automated, autonomous vehicles could be very interesting. Again, we don't want to be caught behind. We want to be leading in the front of this stuff. And then improvement to our demand response dispatch. And then again, we're part of the solution. Charles was on the RTC. We're looking at implementing MTP, air quality, all these things that we want to do. And then we're engaged. I mean, I sit on the RTC, I don't know, Charles on RTC, on the FRA's Rail Safety Advisory Committee in DC as well as the Public Transportation Advisory Committee that was appointed to serve that for the state. And we've got all these different agencies that we work with. And so we're real pleased to be able to represent, not only the agency, but our communities on those efforts. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Charles to wrap up as he talks about this. So Charles?
Yeah, thank you, Jim. I want to show you this last piece because this is an RTC piece and it's in the 2045 Plan for RTC, which is a long reach, but we're a part of it in terms of rail. This is a hard graph to see, but if you detect these yellow lines, effectively that's rail and that's how we're positioned in the region today. And the 2045 Plan, I think, still has a couple of hearings, mayor, if I remember right, before it goes on ice, but in any case, we've been able to get that in this plan, which says basically, here's the A train route that starts in Denton, goes all the way down into and connects with the Cotton Belt. We're not quite there yet. There's still a little piece to go, but I think as far as the DCTA is concerned, that's a priority for us to get down to the Cotton Belt. And the Cotton Belt, of course, goes Richardson all the way to Fort Worth and of course to the airport. That's an important piece of what we want to do. We're still looking at the, and this doesn't show it, Jim, but we do have a plan for I-35W. It'll be separately funded in a sense, Jim, from what we're doing right now, but it's part of our plan. So that's kind of the last piece of all of this, but it's, it's in a huge region. The region is advancing both in highways and transit and we're an important piece of all of that. So anyhow, just wanted to show you that as a last slide. We'll take any questions you might have from either one of us.
Any questions? Sure. You talked about the fares. Having taken the train before, the biggest obstacle, and I've talked to you guys about this before, is, is that double, that regional fare where you take the double hit. Could you explain a little bit more about how you guys are trying to reduce that?
There's two things. We've already done one, which is one of the concerns we had, particularly the Hebron Station going south, is that if you get on the train, one stop, you're buying a regional fare to take one, one stop. And so what we've done with that is that we were actually, by the time you get everybody on the train, you're enforcing the fares between Hebron and Med Park. And so what we've set up is that we don't charge a fare from Hebron South. So that's one way to tackle that issue and to make that happen. The other piece is that we're trying to focus more on how we can price our local fares so that, I mean, again, it's a balancing act. We, we want to have the ability for our customers to buy a single pass, be able to ride anywhere they want on DART or the Fort Worth Transportation Authority. Or now it's Trinity Metro now. And, but how can we price our services so where they, it can be more affordable or at least the same as it is now, if not cheaper? And so we're looking at trying to do everything we can to increase our ridership. So I hope that, I hope I answered your question.
We'll talk, we'll talk.
Yes, sir.
So Hebron South is free now?
Yes. If you get on at Hebron and you go south to Trinity Mills, there's not a fare. The same works at Med Park because we have the same issue, is why would you park at Med Park to take one stop versus how can we get, you know, get more folks on to take that trip up there? Because we have a lot of UNT students that park at Med Park and either ride the bus that picks up or ride the train up to DCTC. Other questions? We sure appreciate the opportunity to come see y'all and we appreciate very much serving the citizens of Louisville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Charles. So Mayor Council, next, we have Krit Patel, who's going to talk with us about an expansion of our neighborhood services program. of our Neighborhood Services Program.
So this is a Prit presentation, but I'm going to do the background, because Prit wasn't here when it started, well, you were here, but you weren't in this position when it started. So, we are so very excited today to talk to you about the next stage of our Neighborhood Services Program. As you can see, we began in 2014, so compared to a lot of other cities, we are still in the infancy of our neighborhood programming. It started with the adoption of the 2025 Plan, which talked in the Thriving Neighborhood Section as identifying, sorry, identified as a big move to thriving neighborhoods. We then created the Neighbors Leading Neighbors Program. It was launched in 2015, and what that did was identify local volunteer organizations and community leaders in each areas. In 2016, we started holding workshops, we attended community events and block parties, and we started working with our Neighborhood Enhanced Strategy Team. That's kind of like our development review team, but for neighborhood issues. And then, in 2017, we started coordinating residential requests. So if I was an elderly lady, I was having problems with mowing my lawn, I would contact Yolanda, our previous coordinator, and say, "I need resources, do you have anything?" And we would coordinate, try to find resources for that need. As you can see, can we stay on that one? So, there were, I mean, as I said, it was in our infancy, we're beginning. So this was our neighborhood, our different neighborhood regions that we had. And in each one of these, yes, we got one neighborhood leader, this would start glowing on the map, right? But all of a sudden, this entire area, that staff had kind of determined, okay, we're going to call this a region, and find a neighborhood leader for that, and start to glow with a different color. And so, this looks visibly impressive, but I think we all recognize that the roots were not very deep on this. So if one person moved away, and they were a neighborhood leader, suddenly that part goes dark. We also had varying degrees of participation from the neighborhood leaders. And although I think everyone had, you know, I think the best interest of their neighborhood, some were more effective than others in engaging their neighborhood, which was one of the ideas. The other thing was, as you, as you see here, was holding the workshops. We had three different kind of arms to our neighborhood program. We had the Neighbors Leading Neighbors, which we had, you know, a leader that was supposed to engage the community. We also had these workshops, where we were kind of informing the public, and the neighborhood leaders, or anyone else in the public about varying issues like, you know, how to start a block party, or how to, you know, crime, how to prevent crime by, you know, cutting your brush down in your front yard, and things like that. And then, the other thing we had was finding resources. So Yolanda would find resources for people in need, but how did all of these really connect together from a Neighborhood, Neighbors Leading Neighbors Program? So, with knowing those weaknesses with our current program, we really, we found Prit and said, "Would you mind taking on this challenge?" And what we wanted to do is, we wanted to accomplish these things. First, we knew we had an active community of nonprofits and churches. Was there a way to activate those partnerships, to really take our coordinator out of the picture, and connect the resources directly with the needs? The second was creating a program that was more proactive. Can we really engage the community to be able to come up with solutions for themselves, rather than, you know, your house is falling down, and now we're going to find the resources for you? Is there a way to get the community engaged on the front end? We also wanted to improve the focus and organization of the neighborhood programs. We had all of these programs kind of all over the place. What does that overarching umbrella look like? And then, Neighbors Leading Neighbors, is it time for a rebranding of that? I know it's still in its infancy, but Neighbors Leading Neighbors really only focused on one component of the entire neighborhood program. So with that, we passed Prit with this as her mission. And, you know, other than Prit's experience running a nonprofit in her, in her limited free time, we basically said, "We want you to take the time to research best practices." So to go out there, send you to conferences, we want you to spend months just meeting with the top neighborhood service program coordinators in our region. What are they doing? What are the best practices, and what fits for Lewisville? Because obviously, what fits for Carrollton, what fits for Plano, doesn't necessarily mean it fits for Lewisville. So, Prit provided us with a presentation, and her vision, we are presenting today, in its totality, of what we think the future of our neighborhood program should be. And Prit's vision is staff's vision, but this is all up for grabs. So obviously, this has budgetary constraints, so as we go through this, realize that if you don't like something that's in there, that's all up for grabs. It's up to council what you think really can activate our community. So I'm going to pan the floor over to Prit, and be here if you guys need me.
So as Claire said, we're bringing to you today some new programming and some changes to programming. We're really working towards neighborhood vitality, long-term programming, where we can see impacting the community five, 10, 20 years from now. And we're truly engaging, we want to take a whole community approach, where we're engaging not only our residents, but then our churches and nonprofits in our programming. And lastly, to take a more proactive approach than reactive. Certainly, when our residents have needs, we're going to be reactive, but we also want to be proactive. So with that said, we're talking about three large umbrellas. Neighbors Helping Neighbors, Neighborhood Engagement, and Neighborhood Vitality, all working towards the big move of thriving neighborhoods. So the first umbrella, Engagement, is truly the education and outreach component, where we still want to continue with the four workshops, but we want to make sure those workshops are providing information and tools to our residents in our neighborhoods. So, for the four workshops, we're suggesting our grant opportunities, and I'm going to go over these later in the presentation, that residents have access to owning a home 101. A lot of our businesses have a service component to them that they can provide to our residents that we don't necessarily have the industry knowledge of. Neighbors Helping Neighbors, which touches on our Together Lewisville Coalition and Make a Difference Day, which I'll speak to shortly. And then lastly, Neighborhood Resources. We feel like a lot of our residents don't know what resources are available to them. For example, we have a Neighborhood Resource Officer, so it's an opportunity for us to tell our residents, "Hey, these are the things we're providing to you as a resident of Lewisville." And then, the Small Area Plans. We've already identified two small area plans in the city, where we have direct access to neighbors that are attending the meetings related to those plans. And so those are also opportunities for us to engage and educate the residents within those areas, where we create kind of a partnership, where we're working on aspects of the small area plans that we control, but then there are aspects where they can come to the table as well. And lastly, there are a lot of community events that just copy with COPS, which also give us touchpoints to reaching residents on our program. Second large umbrella is Vitality. So, a property enhancement program you're well aware of, has existed for a few years and has been very successful. But the two new programs we're bringing to you tonight are Love Your Block and Neighborhood Enhancement Program. Love Your Block is a mini-grant, and it's a reimbursable grant, where there are three different areas that residents can apply towards that grant. One is a $500 mini-grant, where if residents want to get together to do a small cleanup, or something small that they can manage, to kind of start on providing a place for residents to get together for a common cause. We can help pay for things like gloves, and trash bags, and things to get them together, start building that community bond. Secondly, we currently have the Rock the Block Trailer. Because we don't have a lot of HOAs that have funding, the $500 could go towards enhancing a community event, such as a bounce house or something, which encourages more resident participation. And then lastly, a $500 value at any city facility to meet, to apply for grants, or to form neighborhood associations, which I'm going to touch on in a moment. We're asking our residents to, you know, form neighborhood associations, to apply for grants, and we need to provide them a space, particularly if they're not in HOA, to get together, actually have meetings to work towards those goals. That, the value of the $500 does exclude the MCL grant in the Wayne Ferguson Plaza. And then the last component of Vitality is the Neighborhood Enhancement Program, which comes in focus in Pitched Up the Retreat. So the purpose of that program truly is to create a little bit larger of an impact in the community, which is different from the Love Your Block grant, where we're truly trying to improve neighborhood spaces, trying to build stronger community bonds, nurture our sense of community and neighborhood. And who can apply? So this is, this is going to be a little bit different than Love Your, Love Your Block. Homeowners Associations, Neighborhood Watch Associations, and Neighborhood Associations. And because we don't have a lot of HOAs, requiring a neighborhood association, again, brings, is an opportunity for residents to truly come together. And we're going to be available to give them information on how to form those neighborhood associations. And lastly, the grant does require a 50% match in value. And that can be, that value can be raised in a few different ways. One is cash raised, if they wanted to have a fundraiser or something, that's one opportunity. Any services or materials they have donated. And then lastly, volunteer labor, which is sweat equity. So basically, residents would track anything from researching a project, to going to meet with a vendor, they track all those hours, and those hours help work towards that 50% match. And as far as the programs that qualify under this grant, the Neighborhood and Community Emergency Response Team, which Thomas Quinn spoke to you about at Retreat, along with multitude of other programs that truly enhance the character and the community and the strength of the neighborhoods. A little bit more on the Neighborhood Enhancement Program is, there will be a grant application, so there'll be, these applications will be scored based on the neighborhood support, the strength of the actual project that they presented, as well as how it supports the 2025 Plan. There will be a grant cycle, so there is, will be a hard deadline on when the applications are due, when we'll award the projects, and then substantial completion and final completion. And of course, we will be here to help residents along the way. The city website is also, was also a resource tool for them, as well as the workshop that we're proposing. And lastly, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, as Claire said, we're looking at rebranding this. The word helping is a, is a little bit more of the culture we want to create in the city, where I can, even in a non-programmatic way, mow my neighbor's lawn, and I'm a neighbor helping a neighbor. And so we want to kind of cultivate that sense in Lewisville. So under Neighbors Helping Neighbors, we have three programs, the Together Lewisville Coalition, which we talked about at Retreat, where we're really engaging our stakeholders in supporting the programming to better neighborhoods and better our community. The Homeowner Assistance Request Program. A lot of our code enforcement officers, while they're out in the community, get requests from residents, like Claire mentioned, where they need assistance with lawn care or anything like that. And we're able to coordinate that assistance with one of our TLC partners, or someone else that we know wants to help in the community. And then lastly, a Community Resource Guide, which we put together as a one-page guide, where basically different services, such as food, needs for food, needs for lawn care, needs for animal services, are listed on a single sheet of paper, that all employees in the field would have access to. So if they come across someone in the community that's having a particular need, they could hand, hand that single sheet of paper out, and that resident now has access to a lot of resources.
What are you doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, so with code enforcement, we've already, Prit has already drafted that. That Resource Guide is provided to our code enforcement officers to hand out to the public as needed.
So, based on your guidance, what we'd like, what we would like to do on the city website is provide a opportunity, a link to an information portal that truly tells the story of these different programs that are available, and what the guidelines and the applications behind these programs are. So we envision looking something like that. Again. So, a resident would click on that graphic that says Information Portal, and they would take them here. At the very top, we have a quick summary of what we're working towards, which is thriving neighborhoods, and then a link to the 2025 Plan, in case someone is not familiar with that. And below that, we have the programs that I've either gone over or mentioned, listed below, with a quick overview of what that program is trying to accomplish, as well as a community calendar, which will show all the workshops and any other events that we have that are geared towards residential improvements. And if I go into a particular program, at the bottom of the page, we have something, an opportunity for residents, that when they do have a community cleanup, or any sort of event, that they can share their story with us. So a resident can easily click on here, be able to give us some basic information, tell their story, and then share any kind of photos, or flyers, or information that comes back to us. Helps us promote the program, but also gives us a visual story of what we're trying to accomplish.
If you remember, a few years ago, at Retreat, we had shown you Austin's Neighborhood in a box. And our idea is to collect that, and be able to show pictures of how people view their neighborhood and their community.
So I'm going to go to the PEP page, that is a program that's existing, we have a little more information on that. So if I click on PEP, and all of these programs can be reached here as well. And this will apply to each of the pages, but basically, when you go onto the internal page, you'll have a quick synopsis of what the purpose of the program is, who can apply, and how much funding is available. So if a resident is looking here, and they're thinking, "This applies to me, this is something I'm interested in," they can very easily click on Guidelines, and it gives them a much more in-depth guideline of what the program involves. As well as, okay, if a resident's now interested in applying, they can click on the application, and now they have very easy access to the application itself. And since the PEP program has existed a few years, we have, you know, photos from each year's project, so it gives residents a tangible, what can be accomplished with the program. So for example, if I click on 2018, this was the back of a home, and this is what it currently looks like. So I think it incentivizes our residents to really look into the program. So if I go to Love Your Block, it's similar in that, what are we trying to accomplish, who can apply, and how much funding is available, along with the guidelines and the application. And also, at the bottom of each program, there's contact information for the person that is managing that particular program. Same thing for the Neighborhood Enhancement Program. And then with TLC, since this is a little different, but all of these programs tie back into the Together Lewisville Coalition, we've got the mission of the program here. And this link takes you to our current coalition members. Of course, we're looking to add additional members. So we've gotten broken down by different industries. And a resident can click on that logo of that particular organization, and then it does take them to that, that organization, so main page. So we have a good overview of where our coalition members are. The second component with TLC is truly providing a place where organizations or residents can see what needs are in the community. So these are our community projects. And we'll be adding to this. But for example, diaper and wipes donations, that's a need in the community. So a resident or organization can click on that, and they'll get a little bit more information on who's managing that, what the need is. And then lastly, on the TLC page, if someone is looking at the information portal, and they're interested in what we're doing, they can easily sign up for TLC, and we as staff will receive their information, and then we can reach back out to them and get additional information if needed, and explain maybe further, or answer questions they have regarding And we've got the strategy that was presented to you at Retreat below that, and mine, Ashley's contact information, should anyone have additional information. And then Make a Difference Day. So Make a Difference Day is the fourth Saturday in October of, and we currently do not have a citywide program. What we'd like to do, hopefully in 2019, is to start with maybe a small Make a Difference Day program, where we identify maybe five homes that need to be rehabbed, that require some minor cosmetic changes, or safety issue concerns. And partner with some of our TLC coalition members to try to address those five homes, and truly start working on, or stepping into having a day of service in the community. So 2019, we could start small with five homes, in hopes that we could truly, as 2020, 2021, as we move forward, have a community day of service. We have many volunteers and many organizations supporting the needs in the community. Not necessarily just home rehab, but it could be project cleanup, neighborhood cleanup, or something like that. For 2018, though, I did, we did add a link to key Lewisville beautifuls Make a Difference Day page, as well as the National Make a Difference Day page, so a resident could still go on and see if there are other projects in the community they want to participate on, or create a project of their own. And then lastly, with the programming we're asking for, we've created links to information that we feel like our residents would need to be successful in those areas. So if somebody was applying for the Neighborhood Enhancement Program, this goes to our Code of Ordinances, which gives them more information. With Neighborhood Associations, we will be a tool for them, but this is the National Neighborhood Link, which provides information on how to create a neighborhood association, how to write an agenda, how to get started in forming a neighborhood association. As well as additional information to resources that maybe we don't provide, or we're not familiar with, but are available through other links. And then this is the Community Resource Guide, the one-page document I referred to. I'm happy to provide that, forward that to you later in the lesson. So that's the information portal, and what we really, we create the information portal so that residents can have very easy access to the programs where we have available, but have quick access to guidelines and applications and stuff, and it's very clean and very easy for them to see. And then, as far as programming is concerned, like Claire mentioned earlier, I've met with a lot of cities, and most cities that I've met with in North Texas, their programs are 10 to 20 years, in, they're 10 to 20 years. And so one of the things they highly, that I kept hearing everyone say was, you're going to have to be patient, it will take two, three, four, or five years to really engage our residents on something that's this new to them. And so patience will help. And then we really want to take a collective impact approach. There's so many things, great things going on in our community, such as the Parks Plan, the Trail Plan, where we, as Neighborhood Vitality, can take, both that's an opportunity for us to engage residents in the areas where we're already working. So for example, if we're improving a road in a neighborhood, that's a great time to market these programs to the residents in that neighborhood. And it becomes more of a partnership where we say, you know, we're making this road, improving the quality of this road for you, but here's other opportunities for you to partner with us to truly improve your community to the next level. So based on council's direction, we hope to begin any new programming in October 2018. And to summarize, in working towards thriving neighborhoods, these are the three large umbrellas we're talking about. Engagement, which is the education and outreach component. Vitality, which is truly the work, the nuts and bolts. And then Neighbors Helping Neighbors, which is the service component. And when I presented this to Claire and Donna, I told her there was one really cool thing that kind of showed up. Regardless of what words I used to describe engagement, vitality, and neighbors helping neighbors, the three umbrellas truly represented the Lewisville way, value build and serve. Those were really, really good connections. We know with whatever new programming, and even current programming that we have, that marketing is going to be the really important part, especially on the front end. Our residents don't know these programs exist, they're not going to apply. So truly, at the front end, we're going to have to push marketing and the opportunity for these grants and these programs. With this, that said, as far as ongoing budget impacts, we feel like with Love Your Block to truly support that program, a budget of $5,000. And then the Neighborhood Enhancement Program is the same, as was presented at Retreat, with $60,000. And then marketing and engagement, as I mentioned earlier, on the front end is going to need to be heavy. So that would be an ongoing budget impact of $100,000 total.
Do you have any questions?
I had a couple. So back on basics, you had the Own a Home 101, or I think that's what you called it. So how much overlap or redundancy is there between that program and first-time home buyer?
Well, we haven't had a lot of success with first-time home buyer, correct? Because of the income requirements attached to that.
So this would be available to a larger?
Okay, but that's still not quite addressing my question is, are you going to plug the two programs? Like some kind of connection between the two programs?
So with everything with this neighborhood program, what we're purposing is using those opportunities to be able to show, show the public, when you have those touchpoints with them, what we offer them. So yes, that is the case. I think, Jamie, do you want to talk about, I mean, this is really just homeowners 101. So with the, with CDPG, first-time home buyers, what's covered under that? I'm not familiar with it.
So I mean, the first-time home buyers program assisted with the home purchase on the front end. There were some efforts also to give, you could call it homeownership counseling or post-purchase counseling. And I think that's the type of, it's the learning the details of homeownership and developing those habits, I think that's what Prin is addressing.
Yeah, first-time home buyers is more, how do I get a home? Yeah, this is really more, how do I maintain what I've got?
Yeah, how do I live in a community and keep my home? So the second thought was that we've always seemed to have difficulty, I think, and I think I'm correct, with the MCL Grand, getting utilization of classroom areas. We've done really well with the, with the, you know, performance areas, but the classroom area has kind of, you know, kind of become an afterthought because they haven't been in high demand. And you excluded the MCL Grand completely from use for one of these programs. And so my question is, would you consider using the MCL Grand classroom, or as available classroom space, not other space in the MCL Grand?
Yeah, the question really becomes one of who's using it. If the city's using it, yes. But remember, we cannot and do not waive fees at the MCL Grand. And so we start getting into that issue.
Gray area, or it's not so gray?
It's a little bit of a gray area, so we just have to be really cautious of that.
And then the third comment is, and I know I'm kind of delving into more the, you know, James Cunkie side of things, but sometimes when we do, when we're trying to market programs, we try to put all the message together in one product. And I think it's a little overwhelming for people, and then they kind of just zone out and don't read it. And so just a thought, but I would ask you to at least consider focusing on a program and doing a mailing for that, and then a program and doing a mailing for that, rather than trying to go, here's our brochure, here's all the products we have, you know, go study all this stuff and come back and be an expert.
Yeah, and I think that's absolutely correct, that we can do a little bit in both ways. You know, this new portal actually packages it, so people can see the variety of programs that we offer, and then you can actually drill down into each one of them. But then I think you're absolutely right, that you also want to do some individual marketing at those programs, more targeted marketing. So I think it's good to do both.
Yeah, I'm not ruling out the other, I'm just saying, you know, I think that we want that component.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, obviously, or I should think it's obvious, this tickles me to death, so. This makes my day.
I think Stan's done really an excellent job going back and packaging this. You've seen components of this at the last year retreat, you've seen some of this being implemented. But now, I think to repackage this in ways that are maybe perhaps more understandable by the public, more easily packaged for the public, and more easily promoted by our marketing department is really important.
About you? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Prin.
I'll go on to the agenda. We'll start with the invocation by Mayor Pro Tim Daniels, followed by the pledges of Councilman Troyer, and he will also do the proclamation. You got that?
I figured that one.
Okay. Public hearings?
Mayor, on this first public hearing, staff is recommending that this be continued to May 7. So we certainly had a lot of questions. Richard and his staff, they spent a great deal of time, both with group meetings and one-on-one. And we'd just like to have a little bit more time to do some more of that public engagement. So we're recommending that this be continued to the May 7.
Okay, open up the public hearing and then close it?
Yes, sir. Continue, continue.
Now we're down to the consent, item one. Item two. Item three. Item four. And item five.
Mayor, Council, I do need you to pull item five. So that is the continuing discussion we have with UNT about fees associated with the use of Lila. We still have not arrived at an agreement with them. They've had some change in staff, so we do need some more time to do that. So what we're asking that you do is pull it off a consent, and then take no action on that item tonight. That will allow this item to die, and when we do have an agreement, we will bring it back to you in the future.
Item six, a regular hearing. Item seven.
Just a reminder, on item seven, I left y'all a voicemail message that Jim Carter is interested in being nominated to that board again. I didn't know about him today.
Mayor, if I could go back to item number two, I have a comment based loosely on this item here. Donna, what are we going to have in the way of, Mill Street is such a valuable artery, and LISD has been known for building a lot of elementary schools that block up traffic. How much input will we have to be able to make sure that, I mean, if they did the Mill what they've done to Valley, it could be devastating?
So it's not on the agenda, so we can't.
It was kind of loosely, okay, all right.
Call it.
Anything else on that? And on number seven, Julie, will you repeat that?
Repeat that again, yeah. I spoke with Jim Carter today, and he is interested in being nominated for that position again.
Good. Anybody have any questions? Close session now.
We do not have one. I'm disappointed.
We will recess and re-attend at seven o'clock in the council chamber. At seven o'clock, we'll call the regular session of the City Council to order. First item of business is the invocation by Mayor Pro Tim Daniels, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flag by Councilman Troyer.
Please stand and join us for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. Councilman Troyer?
Mayor, we do not have anyone here to receive the proclamation, so we'll just mail it out to them. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code to add a new chapter, Chapter 17.5, IH 35B Corridor Overlay District, and amending other chapters to support the new overlay district. The recommendation is that the City Council continue the public hearing to the May 7, 2018, City Council meeting, to allow staff additional time for continued educational efforts with stakeholders within the proposed overlay district.
Mr. Mayor, I move to continue the public hearing to May 7, 2018 meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a visitor-citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council, not scheduled on the agenda, may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Mayor, have no cards? The item on the agenda is a consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, have received no cards?
Councilman first.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item five, which I'm asking to be pulled.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries, item five.
Tabled item. Approval of the inter-local agreement with UNT for access to and established educational uses of Lila. The admin comments, the recommendation is that the City Council take no action on this item?
Councilman Daniels?
I'm in commotion that we take no action on this item?
Okay, good. We'll move to the next one, is that all we need to do?
Yep. Item six. Consideration of a variance regarding waiving fees associated with American Amateur Youth Baseball Alliances Tournament. Flowermound Youth Sports Association is hosting the American Amateur Youth Baseball Alliance Tournament on June 23 through June 29, 2018, and July 7 through July 13, 2018. A request is being made to waive all associated city fees for this event. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. We do have Kevin Robertson with the American Amateur Youth Baseball Alliances present to address, any questions?
Councilman Troyer, do you have any?
No.
You have a motion?
I move to approve the request to waive the fees as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries, have a good tournament.
Agenda item seven. Consideration of a resolution nominating one member to the Board of Managers of the Denco Area 911 District. Jim Carter currently represents area municipalities on the Denco Area 911 District Board of Managers. The district has requested that each participating city submit its nomination by June 16, 2018. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption, nominating a member.
And Mr. Carter did indicate he's willing to serve again. We have a motion.
Move to approve, the city approves the resolution nominating Mr. Carter for the Board of Managers of Denco Area 911 District.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion passes, and we thank Mr. Carter for serving. Okay, recourse. Nick?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to do a preliminary reminder that coming up on May the 10th and 11th, as our annual keeping tradition alive symposium, I just wanted to remind you that that's coming up, so you go ahead and get it on your calendars. If you're interested in attending our opening ceremonies, that will be Thursday morning, or May the 10th at eight o'clock. And then our Friday night OTAN event will be on the 11th, starting around six o'clock. And then I'll just do another reminder of our next council meeting on the 7th.
Thank you. Nothing?
Thank you.
Mayor, the light coverage right around the council building.
Yes, Mayor, just a reminder that Paws in the Park is this Saturday, April 21st. At the Jean Carey Animal Shelter, we are offering half-price adoptions, so you can all take home a new fur baby.
Thank you. Eric?
Mayor, just want to recommend, or I say recommend, that's not the right word, to recognize all the people involved with Color Palooza, Chalk This Way. You know, once again, it almost seems like, from the outside of it, these things are becoming effortless, that we are able to do these events, and they turn off so, you know, seemingly perfect and everything, even though there's tons of work, we know, that goes on behind the scenes, so. But, you know, even though, and I'm not sure that the attendance was down, but just because it was cold, people weren't staying as long. It was a great event, it was a lot of fun, the layout, everything worked very well, thanks to all the people that put in effort to make this happen. And it's just another great city event that seem to get pulled off all the time anymore.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilman Daniels, it was a great time out there, a little windy, but we got the, a little coffee, we kept going, but a great job to the staff, we really appreciate it.
Mayor and Council, I wanted to remind you that Wednesday night, we have a joint meeting with the Youth Action Council at 6:00 PM. That meeting will be held Melinda in the, at the recital hall of the MCL. So we do encourage everyone to come.
Thank you, Mayor. One more comment on Color Palooza. We did dedicate the first-ever piece of public art, permanent installed public art for the city of Lewisville. It's, you can't miss it. It's on the Main Street side of Main and Charles, right by the monument, signed to the MCL Grand. Had a good turnout for the dedication ceremony, very excited to see that happen. And I want to congratulate Greater Lewisville Arts Alliance for taking four years to get all this together, and $10,000 grant from Total Wine, and going out and privately raising that and a little bit more to make the project happen. So very proud of the outcome, and encourage you, if you haven't seen it, to drive by and take a look, or get out of your car and walk around. MCL Grand, speaking of which, live performances, Lewisville Lake Symphony presents Louisville Lake Symphony presents, and I'm going to stumble through this name, Dmitri Ulasik Piano on April 20th. I probably butchered that. Close, thank you, close. Texas Tunes, that's Friday, Saturday, Texas Tunes, Saturday night, Jimmy Webb. Guy's known worldwide. He's a good friend of a friend of mine, and I've spent some time with him. He's, look him up, you'll find a bunch of songs and go, gosh, I didn't know he wrote all that stuff. Honk, presented by Air Productions Theater Company, their Young Artist Training Program. And Legally Blonde, the Musical, presented by The Acting Studio. And I didn't give you dates on Honk. That's the 26th through the 28th, four performances. Legally Blonde is 27th through 29th, four performances. And then KLB on April 19th is doing one of their garden secrets classes on container gardening. Pilates in the Plaza continues Thursdays and Saturdays. Yoga in the Plaza on Wednesdays. We'll be doing art pop-ups in the Plaza on Saturdays. And Forest acoustic jam every Friday. So that pretty much covers the week. You get Monday off and then you can come to City Council. Art exhibits, we have Sam Ivey Monochromatic that continues through April 21st and 1st. And I've said over and, that's in the North Gallery. And I've said over and over again, go look at this exhibit, but very, very, very closely at the details of the work. And I think you'll discover some incredible surprises hidden in the fire lines of his artwork. It's pretty miraculous what he can do. And that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
I want to add my compliments to the staff and everyone else about the Color Palooza. I really enjoyed the time I spent there. And also, if you haven't, as Congressman, or Consulman, Ferguson said.
I got a promotion.
We did have that dedication of public art. And if you haven't seen it, and actually, I do know some people who drove by there and claimed they didn't notice it. I don't know how you can miss it. But anyway, if you haven't seen it, stop by the MCL Grand and look at the, look at that piece of art. It's very, it's a very interesting piece.
I'd like to do a test for texting while driving if you don't notice it.
Yeah.
Counselor, the secretary. And officer, as always, thanks for your service to the community. Okay, we do not have an executive session tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
The motion, second, to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by a say nay.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We are adjourned. Good night.